It's close enough for seven o'clock. We call this meeting to order and stand for the pledge, if you please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay, amendments to the agenda?
I have two of those, okay. The first, Devin Neary was supposed to be here for just a quick five, 10-minute discussion about downtown designation.
Okay.
And then we have a cemetery deed that showed up today. So if we could place the cemetery deed under new business. Please.
Entertained a motion for both of those, and we'll...
And where are we going to put Devin Neary?
We'll put him in as soon as he gets here.
Wait until he gets here?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to amend the agenda to include a visit from Devin Neary to talk about downtown designation. And under new business, A, a cemetery deed request.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you. Okay, we will move on and wait anxiously for Devin's arrival. Approval of the minutes of August 6th.
I have an amendment or a change under public...
Hold on, just go ahead and just make...
We'll make the motion a second and then we can have the discussion. So I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of August 6th, 2024, as written.
You want to second that?
I'll second that.
Okay, now you...
Under public comment, Danielle Roberts is four elections, not three.
What page did you want?
Second page under public comment says says three elections this year. She says four elections.
So far?
Yep.
It's four, four instead of three?
Yes.
Okay, I got it.
There you made it. The timing is impeccable. Are there any other?
I heard Delvin Neary, this was Devin Neary.
Delvin, Delvin Neary, the Irish fellow.
Can I withdraw my motion and make a new one?
With the addition?
With the correction?
Works for me, work for you.
I can accept it as correct.
Go ahead.
Oh, then I'll make a motion to accept the corrections.
Do you have Mr. Vijay's name and his spelling correctly coming out in executive session?
Yes, he does, there's a T instead of an R. With all...
With those changes?
With those two changes, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as written.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Mr. Neary? You're on.
All right, good to see you gentlemen again.
Thank you.
I'll give you my copy after.
Okay.
Yeah, you can give that to Chuck.
All right, so, good to see y'all. I am here to quickly talk about a recent legislation that could impact the town. So you probably all heard last year that the governor signed into law Act 250 Reform. So that bill, that act, is now known as Act 181. So there are, through that act, the true permanent reforms are not really going to be coming around until January 1, 2027. However, it baked into that legislation were some interim Act 250 exemptions. The new reform boils down to a location-based jurisdiction. So this is separated by four different tiers, tier 1A all the way down to tier 3. And they basically separate those areas that we are planned for growth and those areas that will be conserved. So those areas planned for growth, the tier 1A and tier 1B, are the areas that are likely going to see the greatest Act 250 exemptions. So looking at your future land use map, this is one of the tools that we're actually going to be using in concert with the Land Use Review Board to define exactly what areas are going to be exempt and which ones aren't. So that is going to be part of an ongoing effort, starting in January, to update the regional future land use map, which will hopefully look very similar to town land use maps with a little bit better definition. So what that means right now is the greatest areas that are going to be most exempt from Act 250 now are defined as our village center designations and our downtowns. So Fairhaven has a village center designation, as you know. It's about the downtown core roughly. So right now, those areas with village centers could be eligible for this interim exemption of Act 250. However, you need to maintain certain criteria to be eligible because ultimately what it's looking to do is give that authority that was prior under Act 250 commission back to the locality. So what they're looking for is basically functionally equivalent land use regulations to Act 250. So those things are zoning and subdivision bylaws and also areas that have municipal sewer and water. So you fit three out of those four criteria. You have municipal sewer and water and you have zoning, but you currently do not have subdivision regulations. Likely it's because there just wasn't a need in the past. However, to get this eligibility, the town would have to adopt those subdivision regulations. So what I'm doing is going around to towns in Rutland region and just telling you what your options are and how you would need to update your regulations to qualify for these exemptions. So what actually is exempt potentially for Fairhaven? It depends. So right now, if the town were to give a mandate to the planning commission to draft some subdivision regulations and adopt them, then the town would be eligible before 2027, when the permanent exemptions kick in, for the village center plus a quarter-mile buffer around it. Anything within that area, housing projects of 50 units or less on 10 acres or less would be exempt from Act 250. If Fairhaven went beyond that, and let's say, instead of a village center designation, you guys sought a downtown designation, which I know you've talked about a lot in the past and you guys have worked on it sort of incrementally, that expands the jurisdiction even further so that if you have that downtown designation, it then becomes a half-mile buffer around that designation, which is exempt from Act 250. The difference between the tier 1A areas and the tier 1B areas, when things become permanent, is that all, if you're a tier 1A, which means you have this downtown designation, you've got municipal sewer and water, you've got zoning bylaws, and you have subdivision regulations, you then, any development within this area would be totally exempt from Act 250. So potential huge advantage for the town to foster housing or business because you're looking at, you know, years and tens, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars through that process to go through Act 250. So right now, the opportunity is to get access to the interim exemption, which is from basically now, July 1 through January 1, 2027. The RPC can help you guys if you decide to look at subdivision regulations. We can help you do that. There, a lot of the towns around you have them. Castleton, Pulteney, West Rutland, you know, a lot of the areas similar size to Fairhaven have them. And I don't foresee how it would truly impact you any differently from how things operate in town now. You have zoning already. So it wouldn't be too much more of a lift or too much more restriction, if any, on subdivision currently that you are doing in town. So, you know, there's a couple ways to do that. We can send you drafts, we can look around at other towns and send you sort of examples. However, this is something that the state is really encouraging, right? Is to make all the qualifiers happen so you can be exempt from Act 250. So there will be grant programs coming around this winter. They're called bylaw modernization grants. You probably remember municipal planning grants that paid for town plans in the past or zoning updates. Actually, you guys just had a bylaw modernization grant for your zoning.
We may still have money on that.
Yeah, Joe said you guys posted it out, which is totally fine because then honestly, you'd be better, you'd be eligible for another one. So what I'm saying is theoretically, this grant could pay for the subdivision regulations. There's one other opportunity happening right now that is neighborhood development areas is a huge push within the state of Vermont. We are offering technical assistance grants, one time, no match. Actually, we're not offering, the state is, but through the RPCs to help towns with that. So we are going to help you guys through looking at a neighborhood development area when we look through this whole process as well. Essentially, if you do the neighborhood development area, it expands that sort of periphery that we talked about, that quarter acre, half mile buffer even further. So essentially, what this means is you could cover a lot of Fairhaven's core residential area with housing exemptions to Act 250. So if, you know, I know housing developers have come to Fairhaven and sought out sort of different areas and have been interested in Fairhaven, this could potentially be a huge feather in the cap to say, "Well, if you do look at Fairhaven, we have municipal sewer and water for you and you wouldn't have to go through Act 250." You know, a couple things would have to stack up to get to that sort of scenario. However, you know, this 50 units on 10 acres or less could be happening now, you know, in that area. So, you know, the choice is yours, you have some time to think about it. I'm kind of doing this roadshow as Justin Proctor last Monday. They voted right then and there to say, "Yeah, why not? Why wouldn't we do this?" So we, you know, we put them in the queue essentially to say, "Okay, when the grant comes around, we'll apply for you guys, you know, with you guys and then work with the planning commission to do the subdivision regulations." So same thing could happen today or in the future, right up until we need to apply for those bylaw modernization grants. They're supposed to be out now, but due to a computer programming upgrade at the state, it's delayed until the winter. So I just threw a lot at you all. Do you have any questions? Yeah.
I was, you talk about a couple different grants. And so I'm just, what's the cost exposure to us? Like, what's, you mentioned, are these 100% grant or are these match?
Yeah, so bylaw modernization grants, like you just had one, are 100% covered if you adopt the bylaw. If you don't, it's a 10% match. So in your case, you guys didn't have a match because you adopted zoning regulations earlier in the year. So it'd be a similar scenario. Something like this, I don't think it would cost as much as bylaws. Probably $5,000 maybe to do a set of subdivision regs with the planning commission. So not a huge lift, but there would be, you know, some time involved with that. And, you know, if the planning commission wanted to do it on their own, of course they could without a grant. However, you know, our time would need to be covered by the grant because we're basically at capacity and we're trying to line these up ahead of time. So...
So what would, so if we put in for the grants and we didn't get the grants? We still wanted to do that, approximately, what's the cost?
Yeah, you know, we could talk about how much the planning commission would be willing to take on versus the RPC. However, I can't imagine a world in which you wouldn't get that grant because they're kind of awarding everybody that is seeking bylaw modernization or subdivision regs. So sure, there's always a chance.
Last question to your ask tonight is, are we interested in being placed on that list?
Yeah, the ask tonight is either consider it, you know, and let me know. There's, you know, there's really no commitment here.
There's no...
But ultimately, we want to know who we're lining up to do these subdivision regs or bylaw regs for in the coming year. So yeah, you really don't just decide, you know, I spoke to Joe earlier this week, you know, to let him know about like what's out there and what's happening. And, you know, the way I put it to him is with this Act 250 exemption stuff, you have everything to gain and nothing to lose. Because ultimately, if there is development, that's huge tax revenue, you know. But if there's not, there's not, and you don't have any now. So it's just one more sort of lever the town can pull in which sort of to foster some sort of growth and development and tax revenue. On the side note, the future land use piece, that mapping project that we're doing, essentially it's going to be in parallel with our regional plan update. Y'all know about that. We're going to be doing another big push this September. One of my colleagues will be back actually in a few weeks or a month to let you know about the next phase of engagement, which will be to get feedback from all the towns on our draft policies for the plan. And then we'll be releasing a full draft in the spring. However, we're going to start this mapping project January 1st and run through 2025. That'll be town by town, working on a regional future land use map that will be directly related to permanent Act 250 exemptions.
Right, so the mapping will reflect either we have the Act 250 exemptions or not?
It will eventually lead to that, yeah. It will be right before, we'll adopt it in 2026, and then in 2027 is when those things will kick in. And ultimately, the town will apply if it chooses for that 1A status or the 1B status. You guys get to choose ultimately if you want the higher or not, if you qualify, right? You've got to have those things like you talked about, those four different land use regs, bylaws, subdivision regs, water sewer.
The only thing we don't have is subdivision.
Right, so that's that step. So any other questions, guys?
Would it be worthwhile to come to the planning commission and talk to them? Here's, here's why I ask that. Our next big push is to start the downtown designation.
Yeah.
So some of that is intertwined, some of it isn't, and both of them are big adventures.
Well, I think if you guys were awarded money for a neighborhood development area, then we could help you with the downtown designation as well. So ideally, we could work with the planning commission basically from, you know, next month or the month after through the next spring, or, you know, this spring, on all three in a row. Try to do the downtown, neighborhood, subdivision regs all at once. Well, back to back to back, essentially.
Our next meeting's the 4th.
Fourth of...
September, if you wanted to stop by.
But that's our...
Are those virtual too? Are they hybrid?
You could call in. You could call in if you want to, we could do that.
Okay, because I would probably have Logan come to that one because he'll be doing all the work on this. I'm just the front man right now on these conversations.
That's fine, that's fine. But I think, I think that the first question is, are we interested in this at all?
I think, I think...
Yeah, I mean, why wouldn't you be for growth?
I think it's no brainer.
Minimal, minimal risk and a whole lot of upside.
That's correct. I'm all for it.
It's on the agenda, we can make, we can make that motion to get going.
Sure, I'm trying to think of how. I'll make a motion that we move forward with trying to, let's see if I get this right here. It's a...
You could say...
There, to pursue the, is it the subdivision regulations? Downtown designation? And I thought you said there were three.
Neighborhood development area.
Neighborhood development area, to pursue those three. I'll make a motion to do that.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion?
Subdivision regulation downtown designation and...
Neighborhood development. I kept looking at my notes and, oh, that's...
So they are only funding 20 municipalities in the state for the NDA, this technical assistance money, but it's first come, first served, hopefully we can just get you in. The only other town in the region that has submitted is Brandon. So it may only be you two, maybe Pulteney as well. We'll submit as many as we can.
Do you have access, can we get access to their subdivision rules?
Yeah, they're probably right on their website, honestly, yeah. Yeah, for both Castleton and Pulteney.
I can probably get Pulteney's free...
Yeah.
Ask tomorrow or something, I can get them.
Yeah, but I can also send them to you, Bob, if you want.
Yeah, that, yeah, it'd be...
And honestly, they might be on our website too. I know what the bylaws are. I can't remember if we posted subdivision regs.
That's a big deal.
Yeah.
The next question, how far is a mile or a half mile away? Does that...
Oh, so if you look at your map here in the back of your packet, this is a, this is not official by any means, this is a draft. But essentially, this white area would be what you could be eligible for under the interim exemption if you have subdivision regs. So this white area would be that 50 units under 10 acres would be exempt.
Does this represent the current village district?
This does, yeah.
So if we had a downtown, it would expand that about twice the size?
Exactly, yeah. And if you had a neighborhood development area, it would grow even bigger.
Yeah, it would, it would cover everything.
So you notice the red, that is river corridors and flood hazard areas? Those are no-nos, even, doesn't matter anymore. One other big piece of legislation that passed this year was statewide river corridors. That doesn't go into effect until 2028. However, it will be in effect for these rules. Frankly, what we've seen in Vermont lately, I think we all would agree that building and developing in a flood plain is not working out super well. So we probably shouldn't do that. But there is some, you know, significant area, of course, down by the grade school where it floods all the time, right? But a good part of the town is way outside of that. So that's, that's a draft to sort of visualize what you could be looking at.
I, I'm sorry, I didn't hear, what does the white represent?
The white is that exemption area.
Quarter mile, half mile?
That's the quarter mile around the village center.
Because I mean, our logical place is off Washington Street, up, up, up the airport road.
Yep.
There's some potential development areas there and...
Yeah, you would need that neighborhood development area in the full scope to get up to that area, and it would be closed, it would be right on the edge. However, you know, we could, in the neighborhood development area, you have a lot more freedom to sort of like...
Designate?
Yeah, and your town isn't a square, right? I mean, it is very much sort of more up and down. So if the area grew that way, that would be normal. That is how the development pattern is already.
And if there was a way we could get up off on South Side there, where we have the water and sewer that we put in...
Yeah, the racetrack?
The racetrack is, is a prime area that comes to mind for development.
You know, the neighborhood development area, there are some other criteria like, that come into play, like, you know, lockability and transit routes, but you have a lot of that stuff here, you do. So, you know, we'll see, we'll work on it when it, when it comes around. But I've taken up way more time than I told Joe.
Oh, that's very true. We did not vote on the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Good.
Thank you.
No, I just wanted to... Thanks for coming in again.
Absolutely, good to see you guys. Tell me if you have questions in the chat.
Have Logan get hold of me or Phil, and if he wants to be on the September 4th, is it the 4th? What's the Wednesday?
Wednesday's the 4th, yeah.
Wednesday's the 4th.
Yeah, I'll let, I'll type him tomorrow and see if he's available.
It's not imperative, I mean, we've got some time, but...
Sure we do.
I'd like, I'd like to get going on that as soon as we can.
Okay, yeah. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks.
It almost seems like we should have one more motion to direct the planning commission to...
I'll make a motion that we direct the planning commission to look into...
Investigate.
And work with...
Rutland Region.
Rutland Regional Planning Commission on the subdivision regulations, downtown designation, and neighborhood development.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. I think that's a big deal.
Huge. I'd like to share that, I have an economic development committee.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Share that, that work with the economic...
Well, we were going to invite you to help with the downtown designation anyway. That was...
I would love to help.
Great, okay, let's get...
Rutland Regional Planning Commission.
Devin Neary, he's the, he's the director. Okay, five minutes for public comment. Rob, we haven't heard from you in a...
I want to say a huge thank you to the town for putting the lanes in in front of Derfies and then down by River Street. It has made a huge difference. Makes, I mean, people are actually one way or the other. And now all of a sudden, staring in front of people and cutting them off and stuff. Huge, huge difference, so thank you.
Good. Sure.
Yes, my name's Jonathan Bulwitz, I'm resident of Fairhaven. I have asked this question three times. First time I asked it, it was left completely out of the written minutes. Second time at this last meeting, it wasn't transcribed properly. So I'm going to ask it for a third time. When is the town of Fairhaven going to file for quiet title concerning the properties at 5 and 7 Union Street, 24 Willard, and 1618 River Street? Because the town of Fairhaven's reports of sale are three years past the state statutory requirement of it being recorded within 30 days of any purchase, whether it be at the tax sale of 31814 or the fictitious tax sale of 41714. And if there has been no second tax sale, then the town has no business telling the Vermont Supreme Court that they were the highest winning bidder at the tax sale, which is a factual misrepresentation unto the courts.
We won't answer that at this point. We will, we'll, we'll give that to our legal counsel.
My second question, has any of the board members done a title search, whether in their fiscal capacity or individual capacity concerning any of those properties? Make sure that the paperwork that has been reported within your own land records and Danielle Roberts' fault is completely statutorily correct?
We certainly haven't.
We know this.
It's not our job. We have, we have people that are, our legal people do those kinds of things. The individual selectmen don't do that. You know that.
But it is also your responsibility to make sure that those personnel do the proper work. Do your work in your...
Any other questions? Pam?
Very quickly, I can, first of all, for the record, my name is Lillian Bulwitz. Last time I spoke, I requested of Mr. Gunter, all the custodian, of the audio tape of the Fairhaven Fire Department hearing. He provided, I went over to see Mr. Gunter and he responded that it's with legal, excuse me, with legal being redacted. Has there been any progress on that? What is the status, please, Mr. Gunter?
When the, when the legal people get done with it, we'll, we'll let you know.
Okay, thank you. The second one is... Okay, thank you. The second one is, um, in fact, there's an article in the Rutland Herald dated February seventh, uh, two thousand and nineteen, that Mr. Gunter, when he first came, he was talking about, um, the upstairs, the community center, and he made reference to hoping to have it as a haunted house for the people, the community. Well, Halloween's coming up again, um, very, very quickly, and Mr. Gunter and the board have been very successful in getting numerous grants. The Peter Welch, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so there's been an abundance of money coming in for the community care center, the community center upstairs. And APA funds have been used for the elevator to the upstairs, the community center. There have been jokes. I know people have said the elevator to nowhere, the elevator to nowhere. Well, with Halloween coming, perhaps the community can see that it isn't an elevator to nowhere, and we can have an open house and haunted house, as Mr. Gunter spoke about and is published in the Rutland Herald, February seventh, two thousand and nineteen. So hopefully, we can have our haunted house. If not, we'd like a date for the open house upstairs where the money is going. Thirdly, I would like to be on the agenda for the next meeting to discuss APA funds, if possible, please. And the last thing that I have is some handouts. This is concerning the Freedom of Information Act. The first one is that I came and I asked Mr. Gunter for a copy of his contract. And Mr. Trevor said, yes, there was a contract that was ratified and it was in the minutes. I looked, I looked, I couldn't find it. I asked Mr. Gunter and he gave me in a package that I paid two hundred and eight dollars and fifty-five cents, two misplaced hard part generic packages, uh, pages of a contract. So this is a formal request to the board and to Mr. Gunter under the Freedom of Information Act for a full signed and dated contract for the town manager, which is in effect at present or has been in effect for any time since February two thousand and twenty-four. And I do respect redacting any personal information, no information that is subject to taxpayer funding. That's number one. Number two, you'll find in the documents I'm giving you, um, a complaint, formal complaint against the Fairhaven Police Department and its internal affairs complaint form. This is against Police Chief William Humphries. It is explanatory here that, uh, there was a violation of civil rights, the privacy and the reasonable expectation of privacy and solitude. A copy of this, where Mr. Humphries is the head of the department, has been forwarded to the Vermont Justice Council in Pittsford. And the third one here is a follow-up that in, last week, I believe, I gave each member and Mr. Gunter a request for the check, check checks from, um, March eighteenth, two thousand and fourteen, particular to that date. I did receive, and I can pass around, a check dated April seventeenth, two thousand and fourteen from Mr. Gunter, which is non-responsive. So pursuant to the statute one VSA three eighteen B four, uh, we are left with no alternative but to.
Are you going to litigate this again?
But to.
Are you? Is that your plan?
But to follow the statute pursuant to one VSA three eighteen, which is the Freedom of Information Act. However, if in fact, um, there is a check, I've got like two seconds left. If in fact, there is no check for the March eighteenth, that should be in writing, and if in fact, the, the check that was provided is April seventeenth, please provide on the record documents which support a second tax sale with notice.
Probably find them, you can probably find them in the court documents that have already told you that there is no more avenue for you. Why don't you try there? Your time is up. Thank you.
And this is a copy for Mr. Gichay. And for the record, I'd like you to see me that I'm serving, oh, not serving, but ending Chief.
Your time is up.
We've wasted enough of our time.
Yep. Okay, any other? Okay. Department heads, department head reports. Chief?
Uh, let me see. Been a pretty decent week. We only had one arrest, it was a felony violation of releasing a newborn. We were on seventy-nine traffic tickets, twenty written warrants, four car crashes, we had seventeen chunks of fingerprints, and I gave you a brief overview of our activity. We had a hundred and seventy calls in Austin and twenty-three eighty-one for the door hack.
Questions for the chief?
Are the calls up or down or on average for?
That was a question to the board first.
My apologies. My apologies.
Just address to the chair and then I'll, I'll, I'll catch you. Okay?
My apologies.
Any questions for the chief?
No.
I got just one. How is the recruiting efforts we should be?
We did hire a guy who started on the.
Okay.
And he was, has a nine-year veteran up here, and he was a full-time sheriff's deputy assigned to Welch and Polley. So he's familiar with the area, so we got one of our own back.
Okay.
So he started on the.
Thanks.
So we are full staff right now.
Now, if you'd like to ask a question, you're welcome to.
Are the call volumes up, down, or on average far?
About the same as they were last year.
Okay, thank you.
The rest are just about fifty, fifty percent where we were for the year, so we're right on pace.
Thank you.
Joseph?
We'll start with an email from Logan from Rutland Regional. What Devin talked about earlier, I did respond to Logan. Logan had mentioned in an email that, hey, there is money available to do the project that Devin just said. I did respond and said, and tell him, hey, put us on the list. So it's not a grant, but we're at least on the list to, to apply. That's moving forward. Like we said at the last meeting, budget process is getting ready to start. Next week is when I start my portion of that. So we'll be, we'll be rolling into budget soon enough. Yeah. A little bit from DPW, uh, the guys are still out there working on Big Low Hill. They replaced one culvert, they're going to replace another. They're still doing the ditching, and if you run up there, you see they still lined it, they ditched it and stone lined the shoulders. So they're still working on that. They're doing some roadside mowing. If it's a little rainy, they'll get out there with the mower. Crack sealing, if it's not rainy, we rented a crack sealer, so they're out there doing that. They're cutting back some trees and brush where needed. As they're in the mower, they see what needs to be cut, right, so.
They were painting today.
Yeah, and they're, they're doing the crosswalks today. They've been, they've been doing a lot for me, just a couple guys. And the cemetery of trees, that guy is backed up, but it should be sometime in September to cut those big trees. So we, uh, we did let that guy know that he was a little better and he has scheduled us in. We want to thank Blake Sheldrick. He was our water plant intern. He was here for about a year. He's moving on, he's in college. But he was great for the one year he was here. So I think we'll be looking for another water, uh, intern soon enough, if you know anybody.
Going up to high school and check and see?
Yep, when school starts.
Okay.
Playground school, speaking of schools, school does start next week on, I think it's Wednesday, the twenty-eighth.
Yep.
The playground set to go, which if were delivered, they were all raked out. We had a couple of repairs due to, uh, a couple of repairs we had to do to the playground, to the equipment. Those are taken care of. We need to thank Shaden, um, for maintaining the bathrooms and the playground. He's done a wonderful job. This is the best year we've had down there where the bathrooms have been open, they've been clean, they've been used. So it was kind of a missing part we had, is just someone to take responsibility for. So he's doing this. His name is Shaden.
Shaden?
Yes.
S H A.
Y D E N. Mapping of our water and sewer systems started today. It was raining yesterday, so they didn't do it. But that's, the board approved the digitization of that, so our folks are out there doing that this week. That's what I got for you.
Questions?
Just, just one. We, we talked in our last meeting about, uh, that request for the school had for the MOU. Uh, any update on our attorney or?
Yep, so the attorney got back with me today, in fact, and he said it's going to be, I asked him to do some significant adjustments, so he's going to be here at least a week to get that back to us.
Okay.
Well, that's the question, an old business. That's the first answer is the MOU with schools.
Can I have a second question?
I don't see why not.
Got, got a question on water, water and sewer. People were seeing our, our water and sewer people out and about and were wondering, uh, is that part of, uh, are they trying to get a good record where all the lines are?
Uh, maybe it could be.
Okay.
Because they are, they're all out there, they're both out there right now.
Okay. Because it seemed like a lot of activity with them visibly being out.
Oh, that's exactly what it was then.
Look, looking and they, or working together, so, okay. Good.
Yep. Old business is, we just talked about the MOU, so no, we'll hear about that next meeting, probably. Traffic ordinance review.
So I sent out a link for the board to, if you had comments to take a look at, at that. But we did, I did bring it today so that we, we could work on it together like a family.
Okay, whoever deleted my edit, I'm coming after you.
I deleted one of my own, so. It could have been me, I deleted. I could have. If I'm doing it correctly now, it'll leave a note saying that I deleted it.
Oh. So I did it on my phone, it was a disaster, I was trying to do it on my phone.
There were a few edits. I know Glenn made a couple of edits right here.
As long as we have the chief still here, can we go back to the one where stop signs and stuff? And we put the word that you mentioned, because it didn't pick up, but there we go. There was South Park Place. The one line was there, I put the other one underneath it that said, westerly entering Adams Street. That's that one way that has a stop sign. This is under the stop sign section.
Well, that, when I first read it, when I was thinking that, I thought we already got a stop sign going easterly. So I don't know if you need to designate it as, is that South Park or is that actually free parking? No, with a change.
The way, the way, the way this ordinance reads, it talks South Park. It goes south, north, east, west, and then every now and then it says park and ride. And I'd, I'd like to, I'd like to get out of the park and ride word verbiage. And it's, it's either south, north, east or west.
Well, then I would suggest, because there's already one at Duncanville, Duncan Donuts, which would be entering east, right?
Right, that's the one.
So you probably need to add another line or designate South Park leaving the parking, parking lot, the one-way exit, I guess.
There, there's two stop signs out there, right?
There's two, and it's, one is, so if somebody said, challenged that, it may, I would, I'm just thinking like a judge. A judge might say, well, which one is it? It's not clear, so maybe you add a second one in there to clarify the actual road and the parking lot stops on it.
Yeah, South Park Place, to me, would be the further one towards the Freedom Home and the Duncanville, Duncan Donuts.
That's where the addresses would be, right? It would be on the road.
So.
Let's rename that as a street, rename the one-way in as a.
The one-way, the one-way is the parking lot now.
Yeah, entering the, entering the South Park Place or exiting the South Park Place parking lot on the westerly side of.
So we should add something for the parking lot?
But do we add it here or do we add it?
Is it add Adams Street?
Under?
It's actually at West Park.
Right, that's what I mean.
So you might, so I think either you add another line or modify one of those South Park lines to include both.
Some South Park Place, westerly.
We don't have one, right.
Entering, um.
Or at West Park Place, from the parking lot.
Yeah, from the parking lot.
Okay, I'm going to add a lot.
Go up and add a line right after that, yeah.
Okay, give, what's my street name?
I guess for now it would be South Park.
Joe Gunter.
I'd go at South Park Place one-way.
So let me, to confuse the situation, I was talking to Ms. Rosati today, and she said if it's a parking lot, you don't need a stop sign.
If you don't have it posted coming out of there, then we cannot enforce that.
You can't enforce someone just.
And runs into somebody on West Park Place. If it's not in the ordinance, we cannot. They probably threw it, a through fare.
So, so we, we should have a stop sign?
We should have a stop sign.
And there are.
I, I, I would, no way would I be in favor of not having a.
Right, yeah, come out, yeah.
So, so call it south?
South Park Place.
Park. South Park Place.
Pelkey?
Parking, okay.
Roosevelt?
South, parking, South Park.
South Place Parking Lot, Parking Lot.
Parking, okay.
Just South Park.
Parking Lot.
Direction would be westerly, entering.
Yes, Adams, right.
West Park Place.
Yes, West Park Place. See, Adams doesn't start till the top of the hill.
Oh, Adams doesn't, oh.
And then your next one is up here, so it'd be entering West Park.
So should we change the other one that's entering West Park instead of?
No, because that's the intersection of Adams.
That is Adams, huh? Perfect. I was confused as heck when I was. And he said, I hope the chief's.
Joe looks confused.
I didn't even know my name.
Adams don't start till the top of the hill.
Good.
Did you do add that one way?
I haven't added anything.
There is, and the, the one-way's been added in the section. Uh, if you go, there's a one-way section, and I added.
I guess clarify what we want to call it.
Well, well, let's see if it, if it's.
Tell me when to stop.
Well, let's take it in the order of what we're looking at, where additional.
We only have one, so if you see one way, it'll be Maple Street.
We, I, I think we had two, I thought we had two. Pelkey and.
Oh, yes, Pelkey, then Maple.
And, and it would have made it our third one when I was, when I was looking, but we'll, we'll get there. If you're going at, with, with where they are, all this was, was a saying, People's United is now M and T. So I was just, along with going through there, putting, putting those in there.
So who would it be, who was to put the actual address? Like McDonald's has its own address, so the business has changed.
So you wouldn't have to change every time the bank?
Seven ninety-nine, twenty-two A, beginning at. And put a parenthesis, maybe McDonald's, and just.
Oh, yeah, I, it's every time it changes, you'd be fixing that. I just didn't know what the address was.
Just seven thirty-one, Route twenty-two A.
That would be.
North. You want me to drop that in there?
Yeah. I think that makes more sense than keep, because they do change and it could be anything. It could be a, it could be a dog park tomorrow.
Dog park. I am. I'm not hanging out with you guys too long.
Doesn't take long.
No, it's fine. My entertainment.
Actually, had somebody say that they watch our, our meetings just because they like to see us.
They should.
Takes some time.
Rethink their life.
Article thirteen is the one way, so we haven't got there yet. Okay, well, we'll go back. Yep. This one is the one we, when we talked about the, do you add another section or not? I said, well, let's throw, take, I took a pass, it's going, public parking facilities and the parking lot. And then we can call it anything you want. And then what it seemed like, I, formatting was a little off, but section one was there. I put section two, tried to get some words around vehicles and how often they have to move.
I have to bounce that off legal before you.
Right, and, and it may be not weekly, monthly, but all it was is to give you a starting point.
Yeah, I, I don't know why it wouldn't be daily. I don't want any storage in those.
Right.
You're going to answer?
Well, I have a suggestion.
Yeah.
I, I think it might help us, it might be unpopular, but it might help us.
Would it, so this is the map of the, you know, this is the parking area now. If we really wanna keep some of these spaces free for, so that way our businesses, um, can use them, could we turn some of these into two-hour parking? That would force our, that would force our residents to park further back and it would keep turnover just in a few spots.
If I'm looking at that, I'm guessing this way, that's.
This is the business.
Businesses are over there.
Okay.
Businesses are in this area.
Okay, so, right, so.
That's the, that's the one-way and that's the two-way down.
Right, yeah.
At the bottom.
Yeah, so you say you wanna reserve your spots close to the business for people that are coming in, right? So, I'm, forget a compromise. I would like to see them completely got another, but, um, yeah, the people coming to town should have prime parking.
Yeah.
Right.
Why couldn't you do that?
Because when I come through in the morning at five, something in the morning, all the tenants are parked.
Oh, yeah.
If you took that, using your idea and took this whole section from here back, that includes the charging stations?
Yes.
And make it all two-hour parking?
Yep.
Yep.
What? Go ahead.
If you were to make all that two-hour parking, the people who work there will not be able to park there.
They would, they would put over here, parking over here.
Okay, I thought you meant.
Oh, no, just the, on, on the one-ways, just in the, the only thing I'm looking for, just in the one-way lane.
Just this side here.
Right.
Okay.
The one that goes out.
All these for.
Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't understand.
And then along the other side of the park as well, on Main Street, there's still a lot of parking there, where the chargers used to be.
Yep. That should all be. I don't know why, why that wouldn't be two-hour, or, or do you want that to be all night?
No, we don't want this to be two-hour.
So.
The best two hours is where we have it, because that's the pull-in, run-in, get your stuff, go to her, get her entrance coffee, leave, stop and you go to the new vet and then leave. You know, I think that there is the big, the bigger problem is it is downtown. Because I, you know, as you know, and you drag down, I'm gonna go to Ruby's, that's full today. I'm gonna, you'll wait for something. I'm just.
So going back to, if, if we did that two-hour, when you go back to the, the document, the ordinance?
What does the chief think about that?
It's gonna be hard to enforce.
Uh, I, it's hard. See, see, I, I think the two.
It's hard now to enforce what we're.
What we have and we're gonna have more two-hour, that's gonna double the, I, I don't believe.
What if you, if you did something with the residents that they have a zone in that parking area that designated to. So if it's Zone A, which is over here. The zone, you know, the two on this far end, if you're a resident, you are this half.
Can, can we go back to the ordinance? I think, I think it, to see if that address is yours. So what we did is add this free parking for downtown apartments. Will be in the east side of the parking lot. In other words, and when I, when you, when you look at that other picture, the east side is the side towards West Park Place where you're going to Adams Street. If you go back to the picture again or. Show you here. Yeah.
That's the west side.
This is west side here, right?
So we wanted, so, so then it should be the west. Well, what we're looking for is to be the west side. Is that what?
West, yes. You know, I don't know how many residents are actually parking in there. I mean, I can go down, I know the cars pretty much. I know that car lives there, that car lives there. So if you have a good handle, I'd have to count them and then figure out how many spaces you have, because if you designate one end, there might be more than 10 cars.
Then they can find parking somewhere else.
If you, if you go by early in the morning, it's very easy to see who the apartment people are and where they're parking.
They're parked up by Duncan, that side and take that whole.
In that.
Yeah, in that little court, in that little quadrant.
I mean, that would require some change with your business owners, maybe they get sticker from the town that says this is.
There was 17 cars there yesterday at 6:00.
Well, and, and because we're just, this is the work in process, I would like to think we would get our business owners, Mr. Davidson, Mr. Nelson. Whoever manages, uh, Park View, to say, here's what we're looking at. I, we don't want them to think that we're, we're, you know, blindsiding them like, and we're gonna get, get people all upset in here, like the thing in the park. Let's, let's talk with them, but, uh, this, this way here or?
Most of Nelson's all have the parking lot behind the building.
Now, and that's what I'm saying.
Much the apartments from 55 around the corner that use that area for parking.
Exactly.
Right.
And everybody on this end, um, the Pizza House that were upstairs, there's parking out back. Sometimes we'll get them off from, normally the residents live out back. Um, like I said, I can tell 55 main, I know which cars are theirs, where they live. Um, I know the cars that are above 73 main, I know which car who belongs and where they live.
Because when I look at the parking lot, it looks like.
They're taking prime parking.
But, but as far as having parking spaces, unless we have a, you know, concerts in the park a big event, they're seeing, I haven't seen every space filled on, you know, on a daily basis. And the parking lot, it seems to be plenty of parking. It's, you know, big events are always gonna fill the parking spaces. But, uh, now, so now it's just a matter of, wouldn't we want the parking spaces closer to the businesses to be available for people?
Yeah, so. No, I agree. And I think if you, you do that, this far end, designate those 13 spaces for the tenants.
Can we go back to the ordinance one more time? Okay, so, uh, let's see.
The only.
Change that free parking downtown park would be in the west side of the parking lot.
Right, and I think, and I think, like Chief said, I think we need to give them some kind of sticker to make it easier for you to identify.
It would, it would be, it would be easier to.
Like a, here, you need a $5 permit.
The other, the third one, just so, because we're not gonna, you know, do the whole thing, just you, you know, when you look. I threw number three in there to say there's probably gonna be snow removal issues. We've already got snow removal somewhere in there, but throw it, throw it in there so we at least have a discussion to say.
So that contradicts the other snow removal. So like, so you have the rest of the town.
November 15th through April 15th.
Right, you're not allowed to park on the street out, but then the parking lot, you're saying they have to move it after a snow event. Well, you don't.
Well, because the, if you, you park in front of your house, I live on Carnarvon Street and I park out. The winter, winter parking ban is designed so the plows can move through there.
Well, yeah, no, yeah.
Parking, the, the parking lot's always been a problem because people live there. There's nowhere for them to go. So we may have to do like, snow emergency, like we're gonna plow on Tuesday. You need to move your cars over to the other side.
Move your car to the other side.
Just do what they do in a city, alternate parking side of the road. So you just pick a side, whatever side and say, this is where you're gonna park for a snow emergency and then we'll plow and you move. I mean, it's.
Right, so you don't wanna slow DPW up from removing snow either.
No.
And that, that was the reason for putting.
Or blocking all those people in.
Right.
So there might, so there might be another way, but those seem to be the areas that I heard everyone talking about.
And I think, I think that's a work in progress as well. Some sort of alternate side parking in that, in that area. It doesn't seem like it would be too difficult.
And, and similar to, just so you can get one pass through here, uh, of, of what we're looking at. Downtown, I, is another one, put the, you may wanna put the, uh.
I think it's 97.
Right, the, the actual street address versus what it is, cause it's probably gonna change. I think Bobby got Rose.
I just want to, um, mention that having a designated area for the residents, I think is the best way to go. I agree with you guys with that, because if you say two-hour parking, they're going to turn around and park in the area where you were talking about. The, um, people who work down there park instead of parking in that end. So I really like the idea of having a designated.
So if we move, move on from, from there, onto the next start, or the next changes, and if you see anything that you there was nothing.
Ordinance just spelled wrong.
Yeah, but that was, yeah.
Is this obedience of law? Is that supposed to be obedience of law?
Obedience of law enforcement officer.
There you go, okay.
That's right.
Yeah.
Okay.
But, but keep, uh, keep, uh, roll. Now we got down here, woof, yeah, and.
So Chad brought it up last meeting. He, you said this has been a year thing Liberty Street, so I wanna hear your reasoning. Why you think Liberty Street should be a one-way?
Oh, I, it's unreasonable to pass in, in, uh, any sort of orderly fashion. You've got folks parking on both sides of a street that is, I think, smaller than it should be. Uh, you've got the corner of the building right on the street line. The crosswalk ends with the street before you even see around the corner. Um, it, it's, uh, it's a throughway with so much congestion. Uh, I, I think if we're going to change this, however, we need to have conversations with the business owners, uh, to, to talk to them about the pros and cons. But at the end of the day, I think it's gonna be a better flow of traffic and a ba, better safety measure to make it a one-way going in an easterly direction. And then they can exit down Cottage and through River Street. And it'll be easier to see cars coming down, uh, and, and trying to exit on the 22A.
Yeah, and I, and I agree. And that's why I put it in there, cause I kinda figured I knew where you're going. And I said, Liberty's, that's a disaster. That street, you can never. He said, people going to the liquor store, it's a free-for-all. They don't park in the parking lot. They, you never see anybody in that parking lot. They're always on the street, in the road. You're, you're lucky if you can get a vehicle through there most of the times through one. But, I mean, you already don't allow buses through there unless it's an emergency.
If, if you, if you narrow it down to a one-way, then we can create designated parking spots on the street.
My, my question right over the chief on, on a one-way street. We have two different issues here. It was the traffic. The other one I heard was everyone parking and then no parking on the north side. If it becomes a one-way street, there shouldn't be any cars going that way. There still may be someone, because it looks so wide, that wants to park there instead of the parking lot. And I, I didn't know, do we have anything in this ordinance that says on a one-way street, you, you only park, you don't.
Design it as a board, I believe.
wider left side, similar to, uh, Carnarvon Street, I think of as the example in this ordinance that says you can park on one side of the street, you can't park on the other. Well, if you put that one-way seat, maybe you have to add on, if you do one-way on Liberty, you can only park on the right side of the street. The whole no parking on the north side goes away, cause there's only park on the right side.
You shouldn't be coming back up that.
No one should be coming back up and you, and it stops the person who is over there. I don't know.
Well, they'll just, they'll park on that side and point down the hill.
Yes.
Right, that, that's, that, that, that's what I mean.
On the north side.
If we, if we don't say, and you're, only parking on the.
Oh, they're gonna anyways.
And I'm gonna, I think a couple of years ago, I'm still gonna recommend that, that we reinstall a curb sidewalk around the corner and all the way out past the Liberty Street car dealer. And then you continue your safe walkway to go down.
It's, it's a safe walkway for kids to go to the playground, bicycles, everything, all the reasons.
That would be, that would be, that would leave, that would get rid of the parking on that side. That would do it.
I think that's the problem. And, and we have loosely enforced that, because it does detriment both businesses when you hammer that pretty hard. We get, we do get put, and I think you'll get pushback from the businesses on the street if you designate that a one-way.
Well, we should talk.
But that's something I think we, we have to, to balance on our end, right? We want the input. We wanna take that into strong consideration. But we have to think about public safety.
Right. And our, our job, I think, again, Chief's is public safety. Like, businesses aren't gonna like it.
And it's not, it's not just Liberty. The annoying is, is Tomasa. It's, it's, it's the barber shop. Uh, and there's.
Well, you'll find that the barber shop, hardly anybody parks in front of that. They park in Liberty Street. The, the biggest problem is, is that almost all those businesses use Liberty Street's parking.
Exactly.
Yes. You know, so it's on the goodwill of Steve. And, and if he's, if he's feeling confined, somebody may lose out their parking, their, their parking privileges. But that's, that's one of the things we should.
One of the biggest problems I see with a one-way here. And I, I know sometimes it does get pretty congested there. But you got this parking where the old, uh, wooden, whatever that restaurant used to be, where, where they park. It's parallel, not parallel, but angle parking, basically. Just before you get to the Liberty, then there's a little driveway drives down and behind Liberty Store. So if you designate that to one-way and put a sidewalk there where you have no, you've only got like maybe three parking spots right in front of Liberty Store that can be used, plus the parking lot on the east side of Liberty. So people getting their hair cut and stuff, uh, tons of them park here. And there's a sign there that says, right now, there's a sign, no parking here to corner. But they park, there's like three or four, they park along the fence line, uh, two where the parking lot is to the auto store. Auto dealer. Maybe there's loose end. Maybe Steve doesn't need all that property. Maybe he want, he'd wanna hand it over.
I, I think.
And then it would be a public parking.
Not, not wanting to beat this depth, I think we'd all feel more comfortable if we got Sean uh, here to talk about Tomasa's, Steve to talk about Liberty, probably Rick Wilson.
Wilson.
Josh Mark.
Josh Marky, who's got the Liberty and, and say, hey, could we, and pick a time, put it on an agenda. We didn't get in this problem overnight, probably not gonna solve it overnight, but.
The only other winter drop, because at times I know that we, the buses used to use Liberty Street, went to them and said it's too small. The buses stopped doing that. But I know at times when, you know, it's really bad and the buses leave, they can't turn, make it up the hill, so we allow them to come up Liberty. It's a straight shot without spending, trying to get up the hill with school bus to hit, so.
So, uh, I guess to be the squeaky wheel on this one, you talked about a problem. Is it a problem we're solving? Do we have a lot of accidents? Have people been hit down there? Like, what's, it's inconvenient, but is it a problem?
We have more, more of that, out here at the intersection involving, the turn lane is now fixed. That's our, right at that intersection, that's the most of our accidents are in front of the Durfys and Wooden Soldier area.
I, I just don't wanna stir the pot if there's, if this isn't gonna really help improve our life, our, our quality of life, to stir the pot without really any improvement.
I think, I think that the sidewalk, um, is, is an answer. I think that's kind of more imperative than anything, because it's a safety issue. It's where kids would go go down to the playgrounds from, well, downtown.
That sidewalk line was painted back in. They did have one there a couple of, a few years back.
Yeah, they did.
But if that was barber pole, like the crosswalk area, so people know not to park over into that area. I think it would help a lot.
With the line, the problem is a winner, that gets.
That's right.
The only, the other, back to the downtown beautification, if, if you were to continue the sidewalk around, it kinda enhances, there's businesses around the corner. Where now you step off the corner into cars, you don't, unless you live here, you don't realize there's other stuff around the corner. So it might enhance that area.
And we have a, we have a sidewalk. I wonder what the cost, and we have a sidewalk. Budget, we have, we have some money for sidewalks. Is that maybe something we look at next year, putting a curb sidewalk that goes down to Cottage?
Well, I think we should have that whole discussion with those, those businesses. I really do. And, and not, not jump to conclusions. I, I know they're, I, I would guess they're gonna be, um, and I will. I'll talk to Tomasa today tomorrow and, uh, ask him what his initial reaction is. You know, I, I can almost guess what it will be, but, um, it's worth going to the source.
Okay.
You know, but I, it, not that it changes my mind. I think a one-way is a good idea. I really do, personally.
It reminds me of like Tarrell Street in the city.
Yeah.
If you go to Tarrell Street, beverage, that's a long way in.
Yes, and then that, yeah.
I would imagine that's not heard in the beverage stores, uh.
Not at Raffin.
It would really be a learning curve. And most of your people that go to Liberty that come from River Street, they come off Cottage. Turn on delivery and they just bail out there, run in, grab whatever they're getting, lottery tickets, something to eat, beer, and then, and then bail. They're not there very long, but.
Are you, which, which way would you think one-way would be best? Coming off from 22 or coming up over the hill?
Coming off.
Coming off 22.
I think going the other way, you hurt the businesses bad.
Yeah.
They would get it.
Right, right. They wouldn't get it. Yeah. And it makes more sense. I mean, that's but it, it's something that we don't wanna do without. Yeah, but, and it makes more sense, I mean, that's, but it, it's something that we don't wanna do without, uh, we've already, we've already, uh, beat this to death, what else we got?
Nope, those, those were the only, I don't know, thirty modifications, but they.
So if you're looking, if you're looking at the violations or the fees, is fifteen dollars really worth, worth it, or should we raise those? I mean, fifteen dollars to go out and enforce traffic to me is kind of pointless in my mind.
More pushback from parking tickets than we do with speed ticket at fifteen dollars. And we probably have a thousand of those books sold at home, we do them if you, so I'd like to.
Pushback from what?
Pushback, if we rate parking tickets, I get more pushback from parking ticket than I get speed ticket, which I honor.
Does that mean, that, to me, that just seems low and just.
What's our unpaid parking ticket rate?
If you, well, if you fail to respond to a ticket, we mail them the state violation at a hundred and five dollars.
Oh, that's an insult.
So, you don't have to make, right, you don't have to make it real high, but.
We give them basically thirty days to respond to the local ticket, and then if you don't respond, we mail them the state ticket, it's eleven oh five, section A P K, it's a hundred and five dollar one. And we put a note in there, if you still wanna pay the ticket, you can come back, we'll dismiss the ticket, but we charge them double, it's thirty dollars instead of fifteen, because now we have them, you know, sixty cent mail and the time to write the letter.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's how we encrypt the door. And we can write the state ticket all day long.
So you think fifteen dollars is a good point?
For now.
For now, okay. Fair enough, I.
And then if it's a second offense, it does shoot up pretty fast.
I was suggesting, go raise it up to fifty for everything, and then your handicap a hundred.
Good.
But a handicap now, if you don't answer the local one, it's like three hundred and five dollars.
Right, so, so I mean, fifty dollars rate violation?
So, just so, in wrapping this whole discussion up, it sounds like we've got the changes, we'll clean it up. You said you'll informally go have a talk with a couple people. We don't need to take a baseball bat and hit a hornet's nest and get it all going on that one way, on that one-way one, but let's.
Here's what we're thinking, what's the problem?
Let's, let's know for sure what everyone's thinking.
Are we happy with the free parking and the vehicles to be moved and weekly unlawful?
I just would like you to run that by legal before you.
Make sure we can do that, because they may, after seeing some of the decisions that our legal people are making these days here, it may be okay to leave it there for months on end, as long as it's registered, so.
The mention of any parking for the, for the apartment house legitimately, legitimizes the apartment house that doesn't have enough parking is in, in, in a zoning violation. So as soon as we say we have a solution, there's the solution, so be aware of that. So it's, it's a foregone conclusion, we're already doing it, I, I get it, but it's, it's not. They should have, when they built that and transferred that, they should have had parking, but they didn't. And that's a long time ago, but it should have been that way.
Do we, I'm just, we've thought about talking to the businesses on the one-way. Shouldn't we give a heads up to the, uh, Nelsons and, uh,
Yes.
and, and company on the, they have the, those three?
They should have, they should be parking, their zoning permit.
I mean, I, I heard the discussion, but I've read it, so there's no surprises, and they just see something and.
Their zoning permit tells them to park out back.
Okay.
Um, to begin with, except where there isn't parking, which is that.
So they're not utilizing that? Are they not, they're not utilizing their, so.
It sounds like, it sounds like it's parked place choosing.
Right, so if you enforce that.
Well, where it's from fifty-five over, there is nothing out back to the park. So Dave Nelson, which is the cleaning center, has a nice parking lot area, I think they all have permits. Then you go that way, there's a parking lot out behind.
Lucy's, yes, yeah, I'm familiar with that.
That's all, all parking, but when you come down to fifty-five, there's no land out back.
Right.
And then when you come around the corner, it gets even smaller.
Yeah.
And then Ruby's Bistro, and then eighty-five, eighty-seven main, there's zero, 'cause you have an alley behind it.
Right.
And then when you come around the corner, there's a little strip man behind eighty-nine main, but eighty-five, those have some parking out behind their building. So the tenants mostly park out.
That's right.
Right, I noticed, and the, and the bank parking lot too, you got that little, like, overgrown field in back of where the bank employees park.
That goes to the, the next building over, Mike Davis, and I believe still owns that, I think ninety-five, I mean, his tenants do park out back there.
So it's like, oh, there's an overgrown area, maybe they could turn that into their parking lot.
So, so, a possible solution to this would be that the, the buildings that have the parking in the back, they're not, they would not be allowed to park overnight in that parking lot. Okay, so the people who do not have parking, like, like the chief was just saying, in the back, give them a permit to park on the west end of
The west end.
the parking ride for a fee each year. And they're the only, and that sticker's in their window, and they're the only ones permitted to park there.
I, no, I agree, if you're saying there's zoning.
There's zoning, and any, right, any, any permit of any business, it's always says to park out back.
So I, like Richard, I think those would do, you should be proud.
All we can do, yeah.
I think that's what we, I think we should do.
Only thing we can do, which is.
And the only other problem is, is because it's designated as a parking ride, we do get people that call, they kinda leave my car somewhere. We come and leave it there, so, but they'll say, I have a Ford F- one fifty blue with whatever plate, but not everybody calls. If you're from the area and know, I can park my area, and it's good to go, I'm not gonna be able to, to know that the guy in apartment two got in a truck. It might take us a month or two to figure out, whoa, that belongs to someone.
And I'm, I'm still, and it's a parking ride because the state gave us money for something? I'm still trying to, I'm still trying to understand, it seems like the worst location in the world to have a parking ride. Castle has a parking ride outside their town. Every other town I go through, the parking ride doesn't sit right in the middle.
Parking ride is a, is a, is a simple, um, title, I don't think it ha- I don't think it's, I don't think it's designated as a parking, like a state.
Usually you see your parking ride.
No, I, I see parking ride signs.
At the exit, an exit.
Over Fort Warren, and we're coming off, there's a parking ride that Castle has.
I don't think that's what this is.
Parking rides around, and, and we may be calling a park, and it's all, it's a parking, it's a parking lot.
Cause it's slang for free parking, or the south, the park parking lot, or I don't think we have that actually.
Okay, so there's nothing, I, but the reason, my question, I didn't know if we had some way we were gonna get in trouble with someone up in Montbilly, or, and I. Okay.
No, right, but I think Richard's right, I think we enforce those people that had their zoning for apartments, and then the people that don't have the parking, here's your permit, and you're the only ones that are allowed, and I think that.
That will help a lot.
I think that's the best solution.
Yeah, that's, I don't see that as enforceable.
Why not? If they're zoned for it, they have to follow their zoning permits.
If it was just a sticker though, let's say I'm in, let's say you give me a sticker, and say you have a sticker, so you're allowed to park there. Or you have to park there, I'll just take my sticker and throw it away and just park where I damn well want to.
No, no, it's gotta be mounted to your window, and if it's not.
I just throw, it doesn't matter, you don't, I just throw it away, who cares? Like, you're not, you can't enforce something if you don't know how it's supposed to be enforced.
It is difficult, I will tell you, that parking lot is challenging.
Yeah, it's.
Like, I know right now there's a car down there that's not registered, I'm gonna tell them.
Right.
I'm just haven't had opportunity.
Mm-hmm.
But it's, it's really hard, it really takes months of, for, and again, it's just, my first stop, day or night shift where I'm working is that parking lot. Don't know why, I go there and look to see what I got for cars. So I know, just from watching people come and go, but it's, it's really hard process to figure out what's what. Like, I know the, the older guy's car hasn't moved in two months, but he's also ninety years old and lives upstairs in.
That would actually be crazy too, that, from the New Hampshire, the New Hampshire.
And that New Hampshire car is actually an apartment lot.
Yeah, crazy nuts.
Well, I think because it's hard doesn't mean we shouldn't do it.
Oh, no, I agree, I'm, I'm just saying the sticker though, if you say, here's your sticker, you can park here. If I don't have a sticker, I can park there, you know what I mean? Unless we designate some location that says if you have a sticker, you can park here. Is that, am I, am I being, am I making sense?
I kinda understand what you're saying, but if, if each apartment was designated one and a half parking spots, or say two parking spots.
One, that's all they need nowadays.
One, so one parking spot, apartment six has one, six there, and sign that permit sits on his window.
Well, let's, let's figure out what we have for.
The other problem that we were gonna have, hypothetically, I'm telling you off, I was thinking about, if, yeah, I'm, I'm a tenant, and I come back, and for some reason, all those parking spots are gone when I get home at two in the morning, where do I park? So I park up on the other end, and then I get tagged by the cop at three in the morning, 'cause I'm not parked where I'm supposed to, but there was no parking down there.
Well, I think what we need to know is how many, how many spaces there, how many apartments are there there, um, first and foremost.
Nine and eighty-seven.
Nine, at, at the green block.
The one, well.
The one on the corner, the one on the corner. So there's nine there.
There's nine, I think there's nine, eight, eight and eighty-seven.
So how many in?
There's eight in my corner.
Oh, okay.
Eight apartments there, and there's nine in the corner, so just two alone, there's seventeen parking spots.
And there's, I think I said there was thirteen in that, in that, so, but there's also across, across from Mike's, Mike Morgan's place, there's all those.
Yes, but we have it after, you can't park after eleven o'clock.
Well, maybe we have to change that as well.
That's a lot more people than I thought it was.
And that's just two buildings, that's not come, I think there's one, one above the brewery, there's one above Ruby's, there's two.
Right, you got all the ones above Trap House.
Two at fifty-five main, Trap House, they're, they're all Nelsons, so they should be all out behind us.
Yes, yeah. Well, let's find out, but can we just get an inventory and figure out how many we need, and then find a place to designate that many parking places? One parking place per, per apartment, 'cause that's all the zoning requires.
That should be, that should not be that bad.
Should be easy.
Yeah, yeah, we can bring some information back at the next week.
Go ahead.
Just a couple things, have we, has anybody looked into, um, making Maple Street the alley into a dead end and taking the, the piece that crosses, 'cause it, it's a zigzag. Taking the cross piece and making that into a parking lot.
There's homes, you come through, there's a house here, and there's actually a home on the back side of the buildings. There's a private farm. No, there's two apartments that belong to fifteen main, and then you come down and turn, you have Vandal, and they're here, there's an apartment, and they park in that little grass spot across. And then it drops off, and then it's into the back of the parking lot and down.
I thought that was where it's, apartments?
No.
Well, let's get, that's fine, let's get the, let's get the inventory, figure that out, and figure out what we have to, if we are going to designate spots. But in the meantime, we should be, we should let those people know that we're, we're considering that.
I didn't realize those were actual, I thought those were apartments.
Anything else on that? We, we kind of, we got something, but we also, we also added more trouble than we started with, which is always nice. Okay. I'm moving on, unless somebody is. All right, we have new businesses cemetery deed.
Yes, uh, I'd like to make a motion to sell two graves located at lot fifty-seven B, section eight, to Timothy Herson Roder for the amount of one thousand one hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Give me a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Yep. Revenue efforts, do we have any more additional discussion on that?
I don't, I'm sorry.
No, it's fine.
I didn't even get to the, the transfer station this week.
Give a second to the cemetery.
Everyone else just sounds.
Yep. Okay, uh, anything on the parking lot? If not, moving on to roundtable. Rich?
I don't, uh, the only thing I have is Scotch Hill, we've really gotta do some, at least some serious patching holes up there very, very soon.
Can't argue with it.
I agree.
Where are we with all the machinations of the state?
Um, let's see, the, uh, the wetland permit went in two weeks ago. A week, I'm sorry, it was a week ago last Friday, so that's, that's been under review for a week, we saw three weeks ago with that. The state does know that we're, we've been chomping at the bit for that class two paving. Brian Sanderson, he seems pretty confident next year, but they've told me next year, every year since I've been here.
I've heard that year since I've been around here.
That's, uh, that will be seven, eight years as of next year.
Yep, um, he was more confident than I was, so.
Well, that's.
The guys, the guys do know, and they'll be patching it up.
Mike?
I've got nothing.
Good.
Apologies for being late today, I don't have anything.
I'm good.
This could be a new record, me too. Okay, review of financials.
Okay, I'll make.
It's another piece of paper. Got it.
Okay, I'll make a motion to pay the payroll of forty-two thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars and forty-eight cents.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I, I suppose, thank you.
Make a motion to pay the warrant for one hundred and twenty-three thousand, two hundred and seventy-one dollars and fourteen cents.
Second?
What else I can do?
Mike? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
And the checkbook status is three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-two dollars and twenty-two cents.
Thank you. Do we have an executive session?
We do, I'll make a motion to go into executive session for personnel under one V S A three thirteen A one.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.